The first item on our agenda is the public hearing.
Want to do the again?
What? Yes. That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Sorry about that.
No problem. All here together.
Please rise and pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was such a hurry to get this.
No, I know. No, you're right on time.
Okay. So, several years ago, our charter was modified to allow the board of selectmen in January to review the scheduled June and October town meeting dates to make sure that neither date interfered with a public or a Jewish or other religion holiday. And at this point, Mr. Gilberto, the town clerk has reviewed that.
That's correct.
And has made a recommendation.
That's correct. The town clerk, the finance director, and I have been in a dialogue with regard to what to do with this particular year because the first Monday is a religious holiday, the second Monday is the state and federal holiday of Columbus State.
You're referring to October town meeting?
This is for October, yes, that's correct. There is no conflict or issue with June. The June town meeting, that meeting is recommended to be June 6th, as is called for under the charter. But again, in the October meeting, there is an issue with a religious holiday occurring on the first Monday. We looked at our options, had a discussion with town council, and based on the language, it appears that the earliest the meeting could occur would be Monday, October 17th. And while that poses challenges for the town clerk's office because of its proximity to a state and federal election, presidential election, a couple of weeks later, and while it will be closer to the work for our tax rate recap and heading into our classification hearing, would be our recommendation, myself, the finance director, and the town clerk, that the board approve Monday, October 17th, as the date for the October town meeting. One final note, I know that the town clerk advised the town moderator, and my understanding that we heard from him today, and that he did not have any opposition to that date.
And the auditorium is early?
Yes, my understanding is verify the availability of the facility and that it was available.
Mr. Prisco.
And then the continuation date? Was it the 20th, I read?
It would be Thursday, October 20th, as is called for under the bylaw.
All right, thank you.
Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Manipelli.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the town of North Reading Charter 2-4-1, I move to set the dates for the 2016 town meeting as follows: June 6th, 2016; October 17th, 2016.
Second. Second, Mr. Yule. Further discussion, last chance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? I believe we have some representatives of the Fourth of July Committee here. We have a spokesperson, podium, name and address.
Hi, my name is Nancy Wolf. I am the chairperson for the Fourth of July Committee. I live at 4 Sandsboro Lane in North Reading, Massachusetts. I want to thank you all for having us here tonight. We wanted to, the last time I was here, I think I fortunately was going to ask you to actually dissolve the committee because we were kind of down in membership and really everybody didn't really have a lot of enthusiasm. I'm really happy to say that, standing here right now, no one's more surprised than I am that we have increased in numbers and town support, which has been very, very heartening to a lot of us, so much so that we are willing to actually, at this point, tell you that we are planning an event in 2016 that will come on the evening fireworks. We're reprising our Fourth of July food truck festival again this year as well. So I kind of want to give you an overview of what our plans are and sort of where we stand as a committee right now. Right now, we're going to double our food trucks. We had a little issue last year where we ran out of food, so we're going to double our food trucks, and we are going to continue with our touch-a-truck component. We're going to reduce our touch-a-truck component. Our population really got really excited by seeing a lot of our fire trucks, our police trucks, and we really do want to focus on that because we do think that, you know, the strength of North Reading came out for that event, and that we do think that we want to reprise that. So by sacrificing that space, we can increase the number of food trucks that we have and service our guests more efficiently. We are going to eliminate the entrance fee, and the reason for that is because after debating it a bit, we thought it would be really wrong to charge people to come and see the fireworks. And we're going to recoup that money by doing canning throughout the event and by selling some novelty items that we have. I do have a CAD drawing of what we believe that the event's going to look like, if you'd like to see it.
Cool.
Part of the reason why I asked them to do the modeling was I actually wanted to sort of start to model my revenue stream for what I could expect as a result of the 2016 event, which I thought was kind of key to our discussion. Another change is we're expanding to include some crafters. We think that we need something else to keep people's attention at the event. So we're expanding to include both crafters, and we're really reaching out to our local community to really get that shopping local theme into this event because we think that their support really is tandem out to our success in the long run. One point we're really keenly aware of is that we experience some really long lines and people who are very unhappy at the end. So we're really, by doubling our trucks, we're thinking we're going to be able to, you know, address that problem. We're also going to look for some kind of entertainment that's more roaming entertainment. We're looking for people who do, you know, balloons and face painting and jugglers and things to keep people interested while they're standing there, particularly with small children. We're also, instead of going to segmenting the touch-a-truck stuff from the food trucks, we're going to intermingle the two so that a parent can stand in line and another parent can go and look at a piece of equipment and not have them be that far away. So we think by kind of reconfiguring things a little bit, our guests may have a better experience in the long run. So where are we financially? This is probably the biggest question. Right now, the Fourth of July Committee has $9,794.57. This is really a little bit short of our goal. We, as a committee, feel that we can actually recoup the deficit to pay for the fireworks. We're seeking assistance from you to cover the town expenses. So our current projection is to net close to $9,000 in revenue at the day of the event. This allows us to bank close to $7,000 for 2017. Our objective has always been to focus on building a fund and to not go into every year with zero. We really feel that very strongly that we need to kind of, every year, come out with some kind of cushion so that each year we kind of have a less and less fundraising that we have to do, and there's less of a chance that I'm going to be standing here asking for assistance. We have one other issue that we need clarification on because we have a great revenue stream at that park, and that is parking. That is one area that we felt needed to be improved over last year. We would love to be able to sell premium parking in advance so that people could park at the site if they paid to do so. Everybody else would be at a satellite location and have to come in by bus. But we do need some clarity as to whether or not we can actually use that area and charge for it in a pre-admission basis and have that be as a premium parking area that gives us another revenue stream that helps us close our gap and add to our savings. Do you have any questions?
I do. Go ahead. Mr. Prisco.
So on the whole food truck thing, have you run this by the police chief and his staff at all?
No, we have not.
Because I know, Len, you did it last time, and I'm so happy it was a successful event, but I heard it was a little bit of a challenge in regards to staffing. You know, there were so many people, it was actually overwhelming.
Staffing, from whom?
Well, there was a lack, just a lack of preparation for our police, realized how many people were going to be coming into town.
Yeah.
So I think this time, before you do anything, I would recommend that they get to the police.
Absolutely.
And get this approved, and I think you may even find out, you may have a hard time charging for parking because I think another organization tried to do that down at the high school near the turf field, and they weren't allowed to do that either. But I think you need to get to the police station and work with them.
In all fairness to all of us, the, I believe, it may have been a month ahead of the event. I think it might have actually been a little bit less than that, that we ended up meeting with all of town services, with police, fire, parks, rec, everybody. We knew that we had a problem, and we decided to come forward and say, "We have a problem. We know we have a problem. We're expecting 3,000 people." The other part that has an impact to it, and I'm happy to talk with them. Go ahead.
Just let me interject something there. If I remember correctly, you didn't realize you were going to have 3,000 people until about three weeks before the event. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's why we're starting early.
So it wasn't that you had this all planned to have 3,000?
Oh, good God, no.
All of a sudden, the Facebook deluge with people wanting?
I have to be, just be, if you ever boost anything, just be careful. You will have an impact. Yeah, we, the Fourth of July Committee has really never had a lot of success in fundraising, so really, nobody was surprised more than us that it was that successful. So that's kind of why we stand here in January, really starting to prepare now, because even though July seems like a long time away, it really isn't. It really isn't. And so we are happy to go talk with them, we're happy to talk to fire and police. I want to talk to them because my understanding is that they were supposed to do National Night Out, and it got canceled, I think, because of weather. And we'd love to see, you know, fire and police come and do, you know, a demonstration. I understand they were going to have some police dogs come. You know, things like that, that show the best side of our town, is a wonderful thing for us to do and for us to plan, and we figure if we start now, that we could really plan a wonderful event for everybody.
Mr. O'Leary.
What, can you quantify what you're really looking for as far as covering the town's costs? What are the costs?
The average is about $5,000.
About $5,000.
And that's based on what?
Previous years, that, you know, because we've paid the expenses in previous years. So we have a few years previous that we know the expenses were.
But my understanding is that your Fourth of July plan is to bring in the food trucks and provide some entertainment. So I think experience-wise, what has been done in the past, and this might require more resources.
Well, this is a fundraising event, I believe.
Correct.
Different event. That's not in the do with the Fourth of July, the day of the Fourth of July.
I would expect I may have a, I mean, it's, I have-
This is not the Fourth of July.
No.
No, that's a fundraising event.
Well, wait a second, let me go back. So this is, let's go back and quantify. So the event is going to be on July 2nd, from 5 to when we shoot off the fireworks. So this, however you want to put it in your mind, this, to me, this is the Fourth of July. So yes, I would expect that, so in terms of, let's talk in terms of the event. So in terms of the food truck festival, I would expect to have at least one detail, and he may argue with me after last year that we may want to have a second, which I really can't argue with him on. The, for the fireworks, I need to have a certain number of, and a certain type of fire resources because we have explosives in the area. So that's something that we've done. But in the past, we've spent, you know, rounded about five grand on our Fourth of July event when we've had tents and people there, and, you know, when we had the carnival there, we had, it cost us about five grand. And that was on the Fourth itself, so we had some holiday impact. I don't want to speak for fire and police. I think it might be more important for us to go and tell them what we're planning to do and ask them to give, you know, an estimate as to what they would want to see at the event, given what we're planning to do. I think that's, I think that's fair because I don't think it's right for me to speak. But in the past, we had paid about five grand.
Captain? Yeah, Michael?
Is there a board of health issue as well with these 70 food trucks that you have to go through?
No, so it's, you have a different, you have a different person in the board of health this year that we need to talk with. Last year, what we did, it's actually not just the board of health.
You're right here.
Hi.
Kind of set them up a little.
It's not just the board of health, it's actually also fire. We have to make sure, and it's all up to how he wants to do it. What we did with Larnon last year was we had the trucks come to town hall, he inspected them, and then they went to the fire department, and they were checked for fire suppression because it's really not just the board of health, it's also fire suppression. The two of them together have to be, you know, in balance. We can do it the day of the event, and if somebody fails, they have to leave. It's really up to how the town wants to manage that and what you want us to tell the food trucks to do. But how we did it last year was we had them inspected here and then inspected by fire.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yes. I'm the liaison to the Bring Back the Fourth Committee. And I have to say that the last meeting that I attended, compared to some of the other meetings I have attended prior years, the excitement of this committee and the determination of this committee to have a successful event for the Fourth of July is exceptional. They are very much determined to make this happen in a very positive environment. Now, if you go back to some of the things that she said, this is a completely different approach than what it has been in the past. They're not doing the typical rides, which are core issues that we have to deal with. What they're doing is, they want to reflect the town by having the, all three, the major, DPW, police, and fire participate, actually.
Yeah.
And by having, putting on a dog show by the police, or just having a police car there, the fire trucks, DPW equipment, kids love that stuff.
Yeah.
All right? And I believe we're going to have some private participation in that as well. And that's not been done in the past. The food truck has not been done in the past at all as well, and they're progressing on it now. Last year, I had a table there, and the food truck line went from the center median all the way over to my table. I had to move my table out of the way. That's how successful this whole event was. They ran out of food. That's even more successful. It's the kind of the good news or bad news scenario. They're going to be adding more trucks. It's going to be more festive, they're going to have jugglers. So you think of it, it's completely, it's almost like going down to the seaport in Boston. It's going to be almost similar to that. All right? It's going to be very, very festive, one day. Now, the distinction between the fireworks and the fundraiser, okay? The fundraiser will be obviously during the day, what were the hours that you mentioned?
It will step about 5, and the fireworks go off about quarter to 10.
Right, okay. So you can't, you can have, you can have people pay to be part of the fundraiser, but you can't have them pay to watch the fireworks. It was something that I emphasize, because I don't ever recall paying for fireworks. You go and you watch, and they blow up, and you go home. All right? But in this case, they have a fundraiser, and they tie in, and they do the buckets, and they go around and raise money. I think you said you anticipate raising about $9,000 the day of the event?
Yes.
Okay? I don't know if any of our Fourth of July events doing that. So they're thinking very forward, and they want to be able to increase their money as they move forward and their funding to, so each year, they need to rely on us less and less and less because fireworks are most, many people think are from the, the town basically pays for the fireworks.
Right.
Everybody thinks that, but, not everybody, but most people. Okay? And that's not true. It's always by collection of money, and it's always been tough to get it. And this is a gimme here for this event. So they're excited about doing it. I think that we could be excited about them doing it, and we'll reflect very well on this town because it's completely different than it has been in the past. And it'll be children-friendly, family-friendly, and everybody else-friendly. So I just thought I would tell you, because when I was at the last meeting, they had the two or three computers there, and they're trying to figure out how they can do this, that, and the other thing.
And if you haven't seen the video from last year, if you haven't been out on our Facebook page, go see it. It really, it really was special, and, you know, he put a song to it that was "Together We Can," and "Together We Can't."
What's the implication of not getting support from the town for the police and fire?
My plan, so my plan B. Always have a plan B. A couple of things, one of which is to ask, I'm going to be very discreet in how I say this because I haven't spoken to them, is ask a local business owner who is in close proximity to the park to give me his parking lot for a parking fee, if he can, if he's allowed to, so I could actually, again, you know, recoup money. There's always the impact of, and I've already sort of started to play with the number in terms of the firework number, you know, shorten the show, make the show a little different, you know, save money there, you know, and the other is having another fundraiser. We've also contemplated having another fundraiser. I mean, we don't, you know, I said we don't have a long time, but we have a little runway. You know, we still, you know, we still could go out and see what we can do about raising another grand, another couple of grand, so that we start to balance things. Part of the reason why I played with the number a little bit in terms of the fireworks number, I'm not comfortable going into an event with, you know, having to make up five grand. I'm comfortable going in and making up two grand. I think we can do that. I really do, I believe we can do that. But more than that, I'm not, as the chairperson, I feel some fiduciary responsibility. I don't think we, I think that's a lot to ask of us as a committee.
I have another question, and it's related to parking and the number of people that assemble.
Yes.
So you've had some experience with a food truck, and you have some idea of the flow. That was very successful, we all know that.
Yeah.
There's not enough parking at the park itself to deal with that.
Correct.
We agree, that's why you were proposing to have prime parking and charge for it.
You got it.
This event is a little different, though. The previous event, people came, they had their meal at the food truck. They didn't hang around. In this case, we have the attraction of hanging around, which may make people come later in the day, experience the food truck, and then stay for the fireworks and other entertainment, which might yield even more of a parking.
Yes.
And group issue. Have you given any thought about how to deal with that?
A little bit. I'll be honest with you, I have, I did the parking. I helped up with the parking last time. It is a skill I do not have. I am, I will never, I can't do that again. I was horrible at it. There is another very large parking lot nearby in Wilmington. I do know that, and as you all probably know, the event is not taking place, there is no Wilmington event taking place at the shrine this year. There is an alternative to ask them if we could possibly use their lot because it is extremely large. So that's one alternative I've kind of thought of. One thing that we're really also, that really was more of an impact that we really didn't think about, was that a lot of people who came to this event were not from North Reading. So when you would say to someone, "Go park at the high school," they'd look at you like, "I have no idea where that is." As a group, we need a much better web presence as to where the parking lots are because people today are going to look on their mobile phone, they're going to look at where they're going to park, and we need to have, we need to be prepared for people who don't live in this area to be able to look that up. So those are two things that we've sort of thought about and addressing. And one thing I didn't mention is the Wilmington fireworks event. I will be attending their meeting on Wednesday for asking for a waiver on their carnival license, just so that I have a very good understanding as to what is going on there. From everything I've read, it does seem like they are going to have fireworks. It seems that the carnival is the thing that's in balance, but I did want to confirm that myself because if by chance, they, you know, they say, "We're not doing anything," I have a much bigger problem to deal with. And I would think that I would want to convey that to all our town services so that we really put our heads together and figured out how to deal with it. I mean, it's, I don't, I don't think it will happen, but I want to be prepared if it does happen rather than have to scramble at the last minute.
Michael, it seems to me that this event and the planning is quite extensive, and what they're attempting to do is really substantial, that there should be some meeting with the fireworks committee and our public services and try to vet out exactly what scenarios we have to deal with and what options we have, and be fully prepared, and then come back with potential cost that then the board would have to make a decision of whether or not to put it in the FY 2017 budget or not. I would think that that's the approach that we would have to take. I'm just thinking that an event like this, based on what they're telling us, is that because of the fireworks on the same day, is that you're going to have a bubble in the later, late afternoon, early evening to deal with, and it's going to be substantial. And, you know, we have some history of what went on just with the food truck and with fewer food trucks. And I think that we need to get some expertise of our public service people to take a look at this, help them out, figure out just how to make this work.
Solid waste is an issue, too, that's got to be addressed.
Yeah.
I know last time, from what I heard, was stolen money.
I meant DPW, fire, and police.
I'm sorry.
Prox and rec.
Did you say something about waste last time?
Yes.
Trash.
Soft trash.
We actually have our own dumpster. We have a donate, we have a dumpster that's donated.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think- Any other questions?
No, no question. I just think we should probably reserve a line item in the budget for upcoming bunch of discussions, even if it's at zero right now for a dollar.
It is early, so.
Yeah, so, but I think it should be included so that it doesn't fall off the radar, as you suggested, facilitate the discussions with public safety and DPW to try and quantify what the actual expenses would be. But I think it should be included in the budget as a line item.
Town administrators, take a notes.
In response to, Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy and would welcome a conversation with the committee with regard to their plans.
Yep.
This is the first I've heard of the detailed plans, although I'm certainly aware that the committee's been meeting and trying to come up with a plan that it felt was sustainable for next year. And with regard to the budget, we're in the midst of budget preparation right now, and as I have on some of the other items where there's been discussions at the board level, I'll take that into consideration in the recommendation to the board, which will be released in mid-February. And from there, we can, hopefully, we'll be able to reconcile the feedback from the meeting and that estimated cost before that time, and if not, then we'll reconcile it afterwards.
Okay. We can be available whenever you need us.
Great.
Okay.
Well, I commend you and your committee for the effort.
Thank you.
And it seems, well, in addition to the planning that's going into this, wish you a lot of success.
Thank you.
And I think we do definitely need to schedule a meeting sooner than later.
Yeah.
As to how to deal with what could be a very large bubble at the park in the late afternoon.
If anybody has any way with Stop &amp; Shop, that would be a huge solution, but we've never been successful in that area, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to suggest that, too, but.
It's going to be a tough one.
Just direct people there. They're not necessarily happy with that.
A lot easier than a bank.
You know what? I'm glad they're not happy with you. How's that? We're not happy with them either. All right. And if you have any other questions, please feel free to email me. I noticed that you took a picture of the plan. If anybody would like it electronically, I'm also very happy to send you the CAD.
I throw it in here, that way it's a lot easier.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Take you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, it was great detail.
Mr. Kelleher has a comment.
Mr. Kelleher.
After listening to the presentation, I would encourage the board and the town administrator to try to find some funds to support this. I think that this is a worthwhile town endeavor. The committee is working very hard to raise some money. I think putting some town funds can kind of encourage the committee, I'm not on the committee, thankfully, but would encourage the committee to continue their fundraising and- and as Mrs. Wolf said, to have some funds going into the next year. I think that's the key to this, is to have some saved money that they carry over, not starting at zero in the next year. So whatever the town can do, it can be worthwhile for the local.
Thank you. Mr. Keller is a member of the Finance Committee, so should be encouraged. Yes.
As past chairman of the Rembeck Board Committee, I know how painful it is to go out there and raise the funds for the event, and to work on the budget, and to perform. The committee works endless hours. I know the last year I was in it, I had a couple hundred hours into it anyways.
You gotta go to the microphone, I'm sorry, because people at home can't hear you.
John Magazoo, past chairman of Rembeck Fourth. We ran it for a few years. And, yeah, it's a lot of effort, and it's a thankless job. Everybody in town just expects that the town has put up the money, and they don't recognize the people that are really out there, working their butts off to make it happen. So I commend the committee for doing that, and I think the town should support them. I know our budget for the fireworks was close to $15,000 every year. Yeah. And then we had concerts and everything. It was a lot of work.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anything else? We'll move on to our next agenda item. Anyone here for public comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gilberto.
If you'd be so willing, we do have the Public Health Director here and members of the Board of Health with regard to the item on receivership. I don't know if the board will be willing to take that matter up.
Sure, okay.
And just as, by way of introduction, and I'll ask Mr. Bracy to approach the podium, but based on the feedback that we got at the last discussion the board had on this topic under the Town Administrator's Notes meeting in November, we've done some work to give the board a bit more of a flavor of what the program involves and the types of properties that we envision being referred to the receivership program. I've asked Mr. Bracy to come and give a presentation. We provided a written memorandum as well that was in the packet for tonight's meeting. I'd ask that we not refer by, to any property by ownership name or address, although some of the board members might be aware of some of the properties. But for purposes of the discussion, Mr. Bracy's put together a fairly generic description of a couple of examples that were in your packet. With that, Mr. Bob Bracy.
Good evening.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak with you. At the request of the Town Administrator, I guess there were some questions and concerns about the Attorney General's Housing Initiative Program. When I came on board about four months ago, we received several complaints from constituents, selectmen, residents about abandoned properties that were dilapidated, unsanitary conditions. Some of them were infested with rodents, but mostly just abandoned properties that were unoccupied or bank-owned, that the banks weren't doing anything with them. So I made the suggestion to the Town Administrator that after we went to court, District Court, Woburn District Court, on one of these properties, whereas we found out that the bank was the property owner, and we needed to proceed further to Superior Court with Copeland Page, that I made the suggestion that we try to enact the services of the Attorney General's Office's Housing Initiative Program. This program would basically, you know, basically come in and look at these properties that, again, are unoccupied, vacant, or bank-owned, and the courts would appoint a receiver to these properties, get these properties cleaned up, to make the constituents and residents happy. We had a meeting with the Town Administrator and myself, Gary Hunt, the chairman of the Board of Health, I think, Mr. Chairman, you were there, Fire Chief, Police Chief, and we listened to what the Attorney General's Office had to say. And to me, I would recommend this program. I know the Board of Health has voted to move forward with this program. This is a program that, again, if there's any concerns, you know, we're looking at targeting properties that, again, are unoccupied, bank-owned, where we're having a problem getting the banks or the property owners to move forward in cleaning up these properties. So that's kind of really what we're looking at. And, again, just to give you an example of one property that was forwarded to me by the Building Commissioner back in September of 2015, the Building Commissioner had been working on this property for over a year with a property owner who was going back and forth with the bank, properties being foreclosed on. The property was having issues with illegal dumping, decaying food and garbage in the driveway or in the garage. It was basically just illegal, it was basically a dumping ground. And the neighbors had some concerns, and rightfully so. It became an issue where there was orders emanating from the property, there was a rodent infestation. This was a particular property that we took to court, and we found out that a particular bank or financial institution owned the property, and really, they weren't going to comply with getting this property cleaned out. And again, hence I made the suggestion to the Town Administrator to listen to what the Attorney General's Office had to say. I think it's a good program. I think it's gonna clean the community up. More so often, we're seeing more and more of these properties, and we're getting more and more of these complaints from constituents and residents to try to address these properties, as opposed to these properties just standing there, and us, Board of Health, or the Building Commissioner, chasing people down to try to get compliance with these properties. Another example is another property that really wasn't too bad, had some mobile growth issues, some rodent infestation. I basically used a little reverse psychology and let the bank know that the possibility existed that we might be going through with the Attorney General's Program. Within a week, I got that property cleaned out. So I think it's a good program. Again, we're not looking to target properties that are occupied or owned by seniors that might have an issue. We can use our social services to try to address those issues and work with those folks. So, again, I just want to be clear that we're working on the properties that are unoccupied and bank-owned, that property owners or the bank aren't doing anything or not moving quick enough to try to address these properties for our community.
Could you explain the process?
With the Attorney General's?
Yeah, how's it all work?
Basically, what we would do is the Board of Health would go out, based on a complaint or a referral, we would go out and do a site assessment of the property. If there's a need to involve the Attorney General's Office, what we would first do is we would cite the landlord or the bank, give them ample time under the housing code to correct the violations. If those violations go unnoticed, or they don't comply with that order, that will allow us the option to forward that address to the Attorney General's Office, who in turn would appoint a receiver through the Woburn District Court, and that receiver would go to the courts, get a budget to go and clean up that property. Now, I want to, you know, state that I think the objective of this program is to get these banks and property owners to move, really not looking to really get the receiver in to do it, but that's, you know, last-case scenario. If we had to, we would do that. But I think the objective here is just to get the property owner or the bank who is neglected to address these properties, get them to address it sooner than later.
Steve? So again, just the cost of this program, too, is gonna be assessed to the property owner? The sale of it, the Attorney General's Office and the receiver gets reimbursed, so there's no cost to the town?
There's no cost to the town. The only cost to the town right now would be my time going out on initial complaint to cite the property, and then forwarding that after ample time to the Attorney General's Office. So there'll be no cost to the town. Whereas this one particular property that we did go to Woburn District Court, I know that the Building Commissioner had worked over a year on it, so his time was valuable. The time that I had to spend on it, going to court and sending out letters to the property owner that went ignored. So really, it's that time that's associated with it, and it was a lot of time.
Is there any action that's required by the board as far as endorsing this program? Or shall we just go forth and bless it, bless the idea?
I think it's more just bless the idea.
I think it's a great program.
The Board of Health has approved to move forward with this. I think this was more just an informational, if you had questions or concerns, and most definitely will want to get your approval and support behind the program. And if you have any concerns. I really want to address that, you know, again, we're not targeting old seniors or anybody like that.
They'll be the only concerns that I would have.
Okay.
Michael?
I think this is a great program. I've been reading up on it for the last year. And this particular program, it's only residential, there's no commercial properties.
That's correct.
They're excluded from the program.
Yes, that's correct.
But I believe there is another program that exists that, if we, if it was worth doing, if you're running into the same problem on the commercial side, there is another receivership program, I think, you could follow for the commercial side as well.
Yeah, I think we asked that question when we met with the Attorney General's Office, and I know that there was some more information we wanted to get on that. So I can get that information for you, if you'd like.
Just because some of these commercial properties that are abandoned, a lot of them, but residential neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
So it's just odd that they exclude them just because they fall with the, outside of that scope of residential versus commercial, but it's just the exact same. So if there is any additional research, if you had the time to do it, I think it's worthy.
Absolutely.
Of it. Michael, I know you and I exchanged some email on this subject last year. And I'm not sure if you still have some of that information, but I believe some of it captured the commercial side of it that I provided you.
The information with regard to the commercial properties isn't as readily available. And I think we all but got that feedback from the Attorney General's Office, but there are programs that are out there. They may be a little more challenging, perhaps a little more time-consuming. But there are, there are opportunities that are out there, yes.
I think it's a good program. Thank you for all the work and time.
Any other questions for Rob, Rob Schreiner? Jeff?
Yes. I want to compliment the TA and Bob Bracy for the hard work that they've done on this. We've had, as obvious by this need to have this initiative program put into place. Excuse me. Reflects something I think is very important, that we can do as a board. And that is stand up for property owners who abide by the laws, keep their property as well as they can, and to protect their properties from others who abandon their properties. It's very important that any, all the people of any given town appreciate and know that we stand up and protect their properties and their values by programs like this, and to know that we look into. We don't just, as sometimes is thought, that the, you know, the town doesn't have time for something like this. But this is something that I think that the efforts by the TA and by Bob Bracy has been a great reflection of what we're doing here for the community. So I want to thank you both for that. Thank you.
And just certainly acknowledge the Board of Health for their embracing the program and giving them support.
I thought Bob was the Board of Health.
He's the Board of Health, right over there. And certainly, you know, finding out about the program, Bob bringing it to us, and you're embracing it so quickly, I think it's a good, good step forward. And if there is something that can be done for commercial properties, we certainly should be taking a look at that, too.
I'll definitely do that.
That's great.
Mr. Magazoo.
Yeah, they can't hear you at home if you don't go to the podium. Oh, you had a question?
There's a mic on the table.
John Magazoo, as a local Realtor in town, I commend the department for taking on these challenges. But one thing that the receivership motion can help the process in a lot of these abandoned houses, I worked with Old Andover Road. I got that well again with the help of Jim DeCola. And I worked with Chase Bank on that. Jim's been a great advocate for helping the process by providing letters stimulating the banks, saying, "If you don't do something in X amount of days, we're gonna start fining you X amount of dollars a day." So that might be one way, if you work with the property owner. And a lot of these are short sales, and a lot of them end up being bank-owned. But, you know, as a local Realtor, I've worked with distressed property and a, I mean, HAF-A loss mitigator, and which just means that I help get through these distressed situations with property owners. So in consideration, I'd like to, you know, offer my services to help you analyze these properties.
Thank you.
Mr. Manapelli, you had a question for?
I did. I was, yes, I was wondering how you're going to circle back with the board to let the board know property addresses. I can understand if it's in a litigation pattern, that you wouldn't want to be, you know, basically identifying in advance. But I would like us, I know the Board of Health voted to approve it, but I would like us to know. You might, you know, Mr. Mosseri might be hearing about it directly from you or someone contacting him, but that doesn't necessarily mean I would. And if the AG's office is gonna take on that enforcement role, I would like us to know about it, what the property address is, what the situation is, and basically track to see the success rate that occurs with the program through the AG's office.
Yeah, I can do that. I can certainly circle around with the board, like I did in the fall with the mosquito updates, when I sent those out, I think it was once a week. So I can certainly circle around with the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen, if you'd like so.
Mr. Gilberto? Again, I would just suggest that you do it through the Town Administrator's Office, and you could tell your part in the situation.
Okay.
The board should be made aware of maybe what the properties are, but it may, it may not become public.
So I'll just, I'll send a report to Mr. Gilberto?
That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, and then?
And then he could circulate it to the board.
Okay. Because our emails are public information. We wouldn't want to do that to any of these particular people that may be under hardship that we're unaware of, and just like, through the Town Administrator, then he can let us know in a drop box, and we can probably see if that works.
Mr. Manapelli?
Well, I don't think we're talking about hardship situations.
I understand.
That's, you would be working it out with the homeowner if it's a hardship. You're talking about homeowner out of the picture, bank-owned. Yeah, bank-owned, a period of time where it's creating a public.
The bank doesn't want to invest any money in cleaning anything up. Just find some way of selling it, and that's what we want to avoid.
Right. Yeah, that would be a, that was the concern with asking maybe for, to give the board a bit more information about it, is just making sure that if it's a hardship circumstance that we're taking every effort internally. And I am told that you do do that already.
Absolutely.
So that's, thank you for doing that, and working with the homeowners. That's, that's, but I understand that. And I was wondering, in terms of the receivership, in terms of AG's taking over it, when the building inspector assesses those daily fines, the receiver's supposed to tell, you know, continue to tally those until the time that it's fixed, or the enforcement's occurred?
I don't know the answer to that question. I can find out for you. I know that if the Board of Health issued fines, then yes, we would accumulate. Well, I don't think we would, once a receiver took over, I don't think we would continue with the fines, because we have progress being made on the property. So I wouldn't think that there would be a need to continue fines. There would only be fines assessed if, if there was no action being taken. But I think if we cited a property owner and gave them the rule of thumb that's 14 days to comply, we would give them an order notice to correct within 14 days. If they didn't respond to that, we would issue another final notice per certified mail. If that came back and they didn't respond, then what I would do at that point is I would give that address to the Attorney General's Office. I don't think at that point I would even need to issue any fines, because there's a proactive approach being taken, and now we've addressed that issue, and someone's gonna move forward with addressing the property.
Mr. Magazoo?
You can sit down. Why don't you just sit down where that mic is?
Okay. I just want to-
Okay. I just want clarification. Is, are we just talking bank-owned or, no, Ms. Manapelli was saying that people are in distress, that you're not going after the distressed ones, you're going after the bank-owned ones?
Unoccupied, bank-owned properties.
Okay, so you will be attacking the distressed people also?
Not with the Attorney General's Office. I can take care of that, working with those property owners. We're just talking about abandoned, unoccupied, or bank-owned properties.
But for clarification, abandoned properties are sometimes because people can't afford them, and they're in a distressed mode.
If they're being occupied, you're not addressing those issues.
But you can also have a property distressed and unoccupied because of financial distress. It's just clarification.
Okay.
I think, I don't think he's saying they're not going to participate in enforcement activity. I think that this is just a mechanism for those that are bank-owned, that there has been no response. That's my understanding, and I'm probably, you can, he's saying he's working with those homeowners toward an enforcement resolve informally, but this is a more formal?
The receivership is for the bank-owned.
Far more formal enforcement ability where there is no homeowner in the picture for him to work with. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. Just a quick question. Do we have a definition of distressed? What's the definition of a distressed home?
I don't have that.
Because if it's subjective, you know, I may say that my neighbor's property is distressed, but that would be subjective. So is there a legal term for distressed properties?
I would say, I would ask open the page that answer.
I would say that if the local Board of Health agent makes a determination that it's distressed, and they're going to the AG's office, and they go to a court, the court is going to decide whether or not it goes to receivership.
He's talking, he's saying he's talking about code violations. That's what the sanitation?
If a property is abandoned by the property owner, and we send out a notice, and they ignore that notice?
I understand that, yes.
And then we send them a final notice, and they ignore that, but the property constitutes a public health hazard to the community and the general public. That's the property we're going to, that address, give to the AG's office.
But, but with what I understood in this is Manapelli saying that properties that you deem as being distressed, could somebody be still living in that property and still, and they're not taking care of their property, which we've had examples of, all right? Can you label that as a distressed property even though they're living there?
If it doesn't meet compliance with state standards, yeah. But I, that's not the type of property that I'm going to give over to the Attorney General's.
I understand that.
That's the type of property I'm going to work with that property.
You have a dialogue?
Yeah.
Okay, I just?
Absolutely. We're not even focusing on those types of properties if they're occupied with something. We have resources to work with them to get that property into compliance. Because there's a response from that property owner.
Right, okay.
So we can work with them on that.
Right, because if I understood Steve, Steve earlier on, he was, I think the concern you had was like with seniors who possibly couldn't take care of their property, and then they got the big town government coming down?
No, no, we have social service agencies.
Yeah, we have social services, resources that we can use to assist them.
And that's what he's been doing, and that's what he's going to continue to do. These are the ones that we're going to be participating in this program. I think it's understandable.
Mrs. Manapelli?
So he, distressed is a vernacular term, but the sanitation code defines, and the building code defines what is actually?
Essentially distressed.
Is, they don't call it distressed, but right. So this would only be enforcement activity with stuff that's in violation, which, you know, it's that whole trash definition, you know? If someone has five flower pots in the back of their yard that you think are trash, that doesn't necessarily mean they're in a code violation because those are beautiful for the environment. But he's talking about something where there's enforcement activity going on, and those are defined. All of those conditions that are in violation are defined under the code, building code and sanitation code.
Okay, we have one gentleman in the back has his hand up on, told I missed it. Name and address?
My name is Al Schola. I'm with Vision Realty Group. I'm not from North Reading, but I have handled, as a real estate broker, several short sale and REO transactions in the town. I've dealt with the receivership program with the Attorney General's Office. I found it to be very convoluted, very long, very time-consuming, and it doesn't always get properties sold to end users that will ultimately clean those properties up. There's a common kind of misconception about what distressed means. Distressed can mean not just the physical state of the property, but also maybe the homeowner who is possibly delinquent on the mortgage payments, possibly in a foreclosure scenario. I know that a lot of these properties that do go to receivership are not, they are short sales, as John mentioned, which means that they're not owned by the bank. They're not bank-owned properties. I'll tell you that I think to shorten the timeframe, if the Board of Health or the town were to provide letters stating that possible infractions or fines are going to be assessed or are assessed, or that this receivership program may be utilized, 99% of the time, that does help move the process along. So I would say that as a measure for the Board of Health to maybe expedite the remedy of this, of these issues, they should reach out to more than just the homeowner, you know, explore things like the bankruptcy court, who oftentimes is the executor of some of these estates, look for legal representation that a homeowner may have in dealings with the bank, query the registry of deeds to open the dialogue with the bank. Because as I said, a letter from the town or some sort of correspondence from the town, or somebody in authority like the Board of Health, 99% of the time, from my experience, will expedite the clearing of the issue.
Thank you. All right. I think we spent a fair amount of time on this issue at this point. Do you have any other comments?
Oh, no, no, I'm excused. You're excused. You're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being patient.
We thank the Board of Health. I'm going to go back to, anyone here for public comment?
It was a motion in the back with regard to the receivership program.
Is there a motion?
There is.
It was a motion.
Okay, they can make a motion.
I thought this was just a? I guess that's worth the time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I authorize, I move to authorize the administration to proceed with participating in the Attorney General's receivership program.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Yule. I think we've discussed this thing to death. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous?
Yes.
I asked already, now there's no one here for public comment.
It's officially Chase. Well, that's true.
So I guess they were all here for this issue.
I didn't realize they were all here for that.
I'm surprised.
Yeah?
We have minutes of December 21st, 2015 regular and executive session. Mrs. Manapelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 21st, 2015 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous? We also have executive session on the same date?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the December 21st, 2015 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
There are seconds?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Yule. We actually can't have discussion, but any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous? We have legal bills for November. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a note as a follow-up to the board's request at the last meeting where we discussed legal bills. We've put an update with regard to the expenditure to date. The percentage in there that was identified in the report inadvertently included the funds expended on the J.T. Berry property, which should have been segregated because there's a separate appropriation for that.
Yes.
So when you take those items out, and you deduct out the $8,000 for water, we end up at an expenditure rate of approximately 38% through the end of November, which would put us right on target to hit where we need to be at, at the end of the fiscal year.
Very good.
Just a correction to note.
Excellent. Mrs. Manapelli?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for November 2015 in the amount of $14,977.70 as follows. Cobleman and Page, PC General, $9,397.70. Cobleman and Page, PC Labor, $1,116. Cobleman and Page, PC J.T. Berry, $4,464, for a total of $14,977.70.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Yule. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous? We have license renewals for Dunkin' Donuts, North Reading. That is which one again?
Park Street and Main Street.
Park Street and Main Street. And Mike's Roast Beef, and Pizza, and Wendy's. Mrs. Manapelli?
So, so, okay, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the renewal of the following licenses. Wendy's, Common Victular. Mike's Famous Roast Beef, Common Victular. Dunkin' Donuts, North Reading, Maine, O.P. LLC, Common Victular.
Second.
Excuse me?
Second by?
No, read me.
Was that a second, Mr. Yule?
Yes, that was a second.
Second, my Mr. Yule. Discussion, Mr. Prisco?
I think Mrs. Manapelli had a question.
I did. Did these, were these the ones we withheld approval because they didn't file their application on time?
Right, exactly.
And then they did. Did they comply with the notification and getting to you in the timeframe that you had asked for?
They all returned the documentation by December 31st. We asked them to return it by December 30th, but there was one that didn't make that deadline. But they all did return in time for December 31st.
So is it my understanding that you actually had to send a police officer down to?
To one establishment, yes. And another opted to renew with the great town of Reading to our south. We're not exactly sure why, but we rectified that issue as well. That was?
And, you know, it just goes back to my point I was trying to make last time. The town bears a lot of expense to get something done that is a privilege, not entitlement. And it frustrates me to no end.
Mr. Chairman, just a note, there were two other establishments that were discussed. One was for a Class II license. We've had verbal discussions with the heirs to the license holder and briefed them as to what their options are. And we have a constructive dialogue going on with them regarding what steps they want to take specifically for Greenbrier. And secondly, the town's only livery operation opted not to renew, and there was a notice of such in the packet as well. And that rounds out our discussion.
What company was that?
North Reading Transportation, at one point operating taxicab, which no longer does in North Reading.
Mr. Yule?
So we had two of them submitted their information by the 30th as requested. And one, we had to send the detail down to get the paperwork. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, we just, to remind them that they're going to be closed tomorrow if they don't get down there today to you.
But, I mean, to your point, that's a cost to us, all right? And we, and as a privilege, we didn't have any obligation to go do that. And we had to take a police officer away from his duties, normal duties, to do this. And, and, I mean, to me, I think it's commendable that we did it in one sense, but, you know, for shame for whoever that was, that was so careless, careless about their own license, about doing business within the town, and complete disrespect for us as a board. I don't, I don't think we should be doing that. I don't think we should be sending officers down because, God, they could expand. So, I don't think it should be done.
Mr. Prisco?
I think next year, I think the board should just reconsider its policy and maybe take a different tact next year. But, I mean, this year it's behind us. Let's approve it, let's move on. But, you know, I just think that can teach, like the definition of insanity. Keep doing the same thing over and over, expect a different result, it's not going to happen.
Mr. Gilberto?
Point well taken, but I don't think, there's no one who thinks that the process needs to be improved more so than the individual seated to my left.
Trying to help you out here.
So we have had quite a bit of discussion, and I think the consensus that Karen, Jane, and I have is that we need to start the notification with them as to what the expectations are and what the deadlines are, perhaps even earlier, to advise them as to what will happen. And that if they don't submit their documentation by November 30th, as we asked them to in the renewal letters in the beginning of November, that they will be determined to have not requested to renew, and we will hold them accountable accordingly. And for different licenses, that's different things. But particularly for the alcoholic beverage licenses, a couple of which we still had to chase despite the value that they represent, they're going to have an issue. So I think that our best approach is to take that November 1st mailing and perhaps move it back a month, and give the deadline as a firm deadline, and be prepared to enforce it. And that would be my suggestion.
Mr. Yule?
Maybe even amend the document that they notice that they're getting put in big, bold letters. If you do not, you will cease operations effectively that day. No FNs or butts, in red letters, big red letters.
We have a motion on the floor.
In a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananamous?
Just this year, though.
You're going to give a very brief update, I am, Mr. Yule?
Oh, yes. You guys sign this. I always want my updates to be brief. Am I known to be that verbose?
Honest opinion?
I sit next to you, Steve. Come on.
You're using up your time.
I try and make it look good, but, you know.
Okay. Okay, today we met, had our meeting with the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, and there's an issue here that the TA will address separately from what I am going to cover here. But in our meeting today, that the, we are going to be, the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline is going to do a joint press release regarding the health impacts of compressor stations. And that would be with the Northeast Municipal Pipeline, I'm sorry, the New Hampshire Municipal Pipeline Coalition. So that's going to be a joint statement. Due to the time constraints on January 15th, the deadline, the content will be determined by the leaders of each coalition. But it's just going to be strictly related to health and the impact by the compressors. Also, the coalition feels that the Tennessee Gas Pipeline did not answer alternate route questions. They selected a most egregious alternate route possible to support the current proposal without consideration for the Mass Pike alternative. Modifications of a route change would not change the process. However, a new, a complete new route, such as running through southern Massachusetts, would constitute a change and a restart of the process. FERC had requested some additional financial information on December 23rd, and all of the net Northeast direct capacity contracts that have received state approval have been appealed, keeping the project in financial and legal limbo. Just as a point of reference, the K. M., Kinder Morgan 52-week stock price has gone from $44.71, high to a low of $13.91 per share, now at 14.16. Additional action is to be addressed with regard to the extension of the intervention. The TA will address that. Also, the Tennessee Gas Pipeline has not notified newly affected property owners, for example, to 71 in Beverly, with the change. example, to seventy-one in Beverly, with the change, there was, they were not notified that they would, they would be in a button. So that's pretty much, in a nutshell, what we talked about in today's meeting. If I'm missing something, Michael, please feel free to add, add what you, what you observed as well. But now that the, with regard to the extension of the period to January fifteenth, I'll turn it over to Michael.
And that, that did get published in the paper, this past transcript, right?
Yes, yes, but I think what Mike's going to do, address is in addition to that.
Okay. Anything else here?
I'm done, passing it over to the T.A.
Okay.
There's a question here.
All right, so we're right, it brings us right to the town, I'm sorry, Mr. Manapelli.
Just a fast question. Do you know if there were, I don't know if you do know this, but were there any more interveners that filed from North Reading?
I, I, there have, there have.
Yeah, there's a few.
And let me, let me say this, the T.A. and myself are inundated with emails. Okay, I don't know if anybody here intervened at all, but I intervened as a private citizen, and the board has intervened, and all the board one goes, goes to, to Michael and I get, personally, I mean, I don't know, are we up to a thousand yet?
It's in the hundreds, for sure.
Yeah, so we constantly get information. So if we're going to add, now you can add more information at this time, you can take advantage of this extension, which is what the T.A. is going to address. You can add information, but you then have to let everybody know, every intervener. We're getting them from New York State emails, so every intervener, we are responsible for letting them know.
So that thousand is all the other parties that have filed, not just North Reading?
No, not, no.
I thought you meant, I thought you were saying meaning.
No, no, I'm sorry, if I, if I...
Project White.
Oh, wow.
I think Michael needs to address his issue.
Okay, so you're through?
Yeah.
Town Administrator's report.
Same topic, Kinder Morgan. I'm going to continue the discussion. So with regard to this, and I wasn't expecting a whole lot of dialogue, but I certainly would welcome it, you should have seen in the packet a report from the town engineer, and that was a result of the conversation we had at the last meeting, to look at not just the impact on town land as it exists now, but on potential future use. Town engineer took it a step further and looked at our public ways as well. And if you look in the Dropbox packet, you'll see that there is a document entitled K.M. Report in the folder for this evening's meeting that is slightly revised to reflect town council's comments. So in summary, my intention is to take this information, which is more extensive than what we used for filing for intervener status, and to submit this three-page report along with the documents...
Along with it as our intervener additional information.
So this will be a comment that will be submitted. It wouldn't actually be part of the intervener portion, it would be a comment.
Comment, because we are an intervener.
Any person could submit comments.
Oh, anybody can.
But separately, this is our opportunity to advise both Kinder Morgan, FERC, and all other interested parties in the project as to what our general comments are on the project. And these comments will be focused upon the impact on the town's property, the town's public ways. And the, the text of the cover letter will include the references that we identified in our resolution as well to become an intervener.
Okay, and the deadline is the eighteenth?
The fifteenth. That's my intention is submitted.
So, what are you looking for from the board?
I, I don't necessarily know that, I mean, the board's welcome to vote on it, to vote to authorize the filing of the comments, that might be helpful. I didn't put a motion...
Or just get a general consensus.
Yeah, I mean, more just, you know, the board had some very good comments and concerns, and I wanted to make sure that we addressed them.
Because we won't have another meeting before...
Correct, it would need to be done by the, by this Friday.
Does anyone from the board have, yes?
So would you, so you already identified reasons in the interv, the town's motion to intervene?
They were the very reasons that were reviewed at the last meeting.
But he's adding more of the reason, which is because we're going to be utilizing it for our own, you know, potential future infrastructure. So is that not something that you would just amend?
We could. I can consult with town council about that as an option. Either way, I think we need to get it out into the public.
Definitely.
That these ideas are out there. We have not seen this level of detail in most of the intervener filings that I've seen. There've been very detailed letters that have listed multiple reasons and kind of broad impacts. These are very specific. And they will be public record, they'll get mass emailed out to all of the, those requesting to be on the subscription.
Do comments hold as much weight as what you file as an intervener?
I think the select one brings up a good point, that the, the most weight you can have is the legal standing of being an intervener, and this would be additional justification. So we could certainly, I, I would, I'll talk with town council, but I'm thinking that we could file it in both ways, file it to amend our intervener filing, and then file it as a comment as well.
Yeah, that might be, yeah.
We're in process of some of these things that are identified, we're already moved, well, we're moving forward on these. So I would think that we would want to be stronger than we're concerned about this. It's, we have a, we already had a plan in motion, moving forward, especially with the, with the water connection.
Right.
We are moving forward on that plan, and this is going to be disruptive of that, the town's need, immediate need. I would say maybe being really more specific about our use of our corridors for that, for those purposes, you know?
Sure.
That's just my thought on it.
Should we make a motion?
We don't need one.
No, I think just a...
Yeah. We already said it.
It's consensus.
Okay.
But I would prefer it not to be a comment, I would prefer it, it's included as part of our motion. However, we do that amending it, because now we have the additional time to...
Sure.
To include these additional reasons that may not have been incorporated into the I just have one more comment, because this is how it was explained to me, which, you know, this doesn't really tell us much. I can't really even see this.
Is this in better?
My, my understanding of it, even, even though the, the actual piping is reduced in size, is that it doesn't just take up that portion because there's X amount of feet from either side that is no longer going to be capable of use. It, it, so it's, it's that plus the...
There's a buffer.
The buffer, right? So...
It's a certain footage on each side.
Yes, right, right.
And it's given, and I, right now, it escapes me. Is it fifty?
Twenty-five.
Fifty feet?
Was it twenty-five feet on each?
It was twenty-five, it's twenty-five and twenty-five, as I recall.
Yeah.
Just, that's a pretty significant...
Yeah. And the closer to the house, the, or septic system, or...
Once it's gone to us, it's gone, or gone to a butter, it's gone, for good.
The issue is that a lot of the homes that are affected have an easement already from the power company. And my understanding was that the gas line would be on either the left or right of that, not necessarily the easement, but where the, the structures are.
Line, structure, right.
Right, because they can't put the, the gas line down through the structures, I guess. So that means that if it's on, if you have a home to the left of the line, and they put the gas line on that side, then there's a further intrusion required of easement of another twenty-five feet. It may not be quite twenty-five feet, because I don't know what the, the total width of the electrical easement is. So it has an, it has a bigger impact, depending on which side it is, right? And I suppose that, I, I think the way, most of the, the map when we looked at it, the lots are either on one side or the other. There are not lots that are adjacent, you know, on opposite sides. So, you know, to get, to keep the pipeline on the right side, it will have a minimum impact on an additional easement. It's still an impact, obviously, because you got this, a lot of energy running under the ground that potentially could create a problem.
I think, too, that if you're acquiring a parcel with your eyes wide open, knowing there's an easement there versus...
Versus having another one, right.
Something that's going to be put in there after the fact.
It has a major impact on your property value, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Yule?
Yeah, which is something that the, we received some documentation at the meeting with regard to the impact that it has on property taxes. But just a point of clarification about, you know, we have a tendency to think of the pipe, okay, and twenty-five on each side. But in reality, when you have the power lines going through, it's fifty feet from there, and then the pipe comes in twenty-five feet. Because that's different than thinking it's twenty-five and twenty-five just by itself.
Yes, yes.
It's really fifty feet from the power line, and then twenty-five feet, the pipe goes in. So now, and that's how you get it. It's not, it's not like some of that twenty-five feet's going to go underneath the line, you know what I mean? Under, under, underneath the power line.
Right, right.
Okay, so, so it's really fifty feet one side or the other, with the, with the pipeline being twenty-five feet down the middle. Does that make sense of the way I'm describing?
So they, so they have these arrangements, though, with the utility companies to go through, but they don't have that with us. But once, once we go through this process and, and maybe they disagree with us, they get that eminent ability to take it.
Domain, right.
So it's gone to us. So that's, that, that's more of the line of thinking of it. It's not just running alongside a utility easement, it's gone now, the land is gone now. So that would be, I think, a major concern for the town.
Are you speaking about town property right now?
Yes, yes.
Versus, versus private property?
Definitely. I mean, I think it would be a concern for private property, too.
Of course, yeah, okay.
All right. Town Administrator, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Town Administrator's report?
Yes.
So four comments tonight. First, a friendly reminder to the community that there will be a Route Twenty-Eight, Main Street redevelopment potential workshop this Wednesday, January thirteenth, at six thirty P.M. at the Public Library.
It's at the library.
It's at the library in the community room, yes, the activity room, yes. There's a copy of the flyer in the board's packet. Second, attached, please find a copy of the town's application for D.L.T.A. funding to M.A.P.C., pursuant to our Community Compact Award. We've also enclosed a copy of the town's letter of support for the larger regional D.L.T.A. project application, which I mentioned at the last meeting. Specifically, I highlighted the issue of commuter service, and I did see a revised scope come around from M.A.P.C. today that included that service in it, as we were expecting. We expect to hear back in approximately six weeks on our individual application. The state will then review a project's scope with us, with the goal being to combine the D.L.T.A. funding with five thousand dollars worth of state compact funding. So again, that's about a six-week timeline, and I'll continue to keep the board apprised as to our progress on that particular area. Thirdly, I believe this came up at the last meeting, but the town has been advised by Congressman Molten of the North Shore Export Forum in Amesbury on January nineteenth, from nine A.M. until twelve P.M. We've advised the Economic Development Committee, and also advised the Reading, North Reading Chamber of Commerce. Certainly would encourage any business in North Reading that believes it might be able to benefit from an international market to consider attending the event. And if there's any question or desire for more information, please don't hesitate to contact either my office or the Community Planning Commission's office or the chamber. And fourth, Jody Cader, Secretary of the Zoning Board of Appeals, has resigned from her position. I'd like to take a minute to thank her for her service to the town and wish her the best of luck in her new endeavors. And finally, a new piece of information that came out after the publication of this report, but I'd like to congratulate Brian Carter in the Information Technology Department on the birth of his son, his second child, Jacob Ryan, who I'm told was born yesterday, who was eight pounds, two ounces. I wish Brian and his family well. Thank you.
You.
Does he live in North Reading?
Doesn't, no.
No first prize.
No first prize.
That's right, yeah.
Mr. Prisco?
Reading, North Reading Chamber is having their annual meeting kickoff on the twenty-eighth of January. They're having the CEO from Cummings Park, or Cummings Property now, come out and be the guest speaker. It's at Teresa's Prime. It's from seven-thirty in the morning till nine A.M., and they're encouraging business community, whether you're a member or not, to attend the event. So I just wanted to pass that along. I want to chat with you, Mr. Gilberto, about the trash and recycling. I've received in the last three full weeks, consistent people missing, for some reason, recycling's not getting picked up, or their barrels aren't getting picked up. And I've received many of this, but if you go online to, or if you go on Facebook and to the North Reading Parent Association, you'll just see there's a lot of communication about this issue between the residents. So I'm not sure what's going on, and I'm not sure the feedback's getting to the D.P.W. Director. Everybody I've spoken with, I've tried to send him his way, so he's aware of it. But it does send, seems to be a trend in the wrong direction with our recycling pickup.
Is it random? I mean, there was the, the day of the snowstorm, it didn't get done.
Yeah.
It can't get done the following day.
Yeah. It wasn't, outside of that one, no. It's two or three houses on the same street, maybe almost a whole street at times. And I just see it trending in, in a bad direction.
There's been a couple of weeks in a row where the recycling was at least in our neighborhood a day later. One was the storm related, but the other one was, I don't know what it was related to, other than it was a day later.
Well, I called here the day, you know, the storm, but it was clear, it was not just the couple, it was...
But isn't that, even last week...
And they came and picked that up the following day.
Yeah. I just think somebody needs to ping, sorry, go ahead.
No, I, please finish, it's your time.
I'm good on that one. You want, you want to comment on it?
If I could, yeah.
I mean, I think that we went through this phase about this time last year, maybe a little
bit more recently, where the performance suffered, and the D.P.W. Director engaged the conversation and was able to turn it around. I think that things were good until sometime in the beginning of December, when it kind of became unsteady, and I got reports that something changed in the collection rhythm in a number of different areas. So we'll, we'll reach back out to J.R.M. and, and see what's going on and get a report to the board.
Just a quick update on the J.T. Berry. As you know, we had packages available for pickup for the RFP, for us to acquire a commercial broker. So we did have four packages picked up. Now we're just waiting for the responses, and we'll hopefully stop getting those any time now. And then we plan to do the evaluations next week.
When are the bids due in, Michael?
They're due, they were due on Friday, the fifteenth, this Friday, at four P.M., but we're, in consideration of the impact on the town hall schedule, we're going to extend the deadline to, I believe it's going to be nine o'clock or nine-thirty on Monday morning. But they'll be circulated to the E.D.C. well in advance of forty-eight hours electronically.
We'll have plenty of time.
So is there going to be a formal bid opening?
It's not an opening. What actually happens, because it's an RFP, is that they go through and do a qualitative evaluation. But there is a deadline that they all need to comply with.
I was asked by Reading, Danielle and I were asked by Reading Town Council, I been to, if we want my income up to that town. They had, apparently they had an Economic Development Committee that sunset many years ago, because it was really only focused on their downtown, but they would, they're very interested, they've heard a lot about our program and how well it's been going, and they would like us to come out and sort of share with them how we'd be able to create ours. And so I just want to make sure nobody had any objection with us going to do that. You know, the information's relatively available for them, but I figured they'd asked for our presence, and I just wanted to run.
Are they asking for like a joint board meeting?
Nope.
Or someone to come and make a presentation?
No, 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 no. Just a couple people on their end will present how we created our E.D.C., show them our chart, show them how we did it, and, and that's it. Just leave them with some information, some guidance, and then, you know, be available for them for any future questions, so. I told them I would get back to them and let them know, but I just want everyone to know. What, Danielle and myself would be requested to do that.
Comments, anybody?
I'm surprised, they had a very successful Economic Development Committee down there for a number of years, not just for downtown, but also took it down on what was John Street, now it's Walker's Brookway.
Yeah.
And, it's good, it's always good to share information and build relationships.
Absolutely. I think it's very good. And the last thing I have is, you know, New England Patriots playing on Saturday, got the tie. I'm ready, I'll be going in the game, hopefully it won't rain.
Are they going to call you?
Go Patriots.
You want the roster?
They may give me the, they may bring me in. Get some water or something, they need it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Kate?
I don't, I think I've talked enough.[1778.63]
I don't, I think I've talked enough, I don't really have anything.
Jeff?
First of all, as reported in the transcript, you can, it's the beginning of the election season, and everybody can pull papers, I hope the members of this board continue to run for office, but I also hope that people in the community step forward for this opportunity to pull papers and to run for varying, various offices in the town. The town can always use good people, and so, I think it's, I welcome anybody who can come. You know, with regard to the trash issue, you should, I don't know if you people subscribe to the Globe, where you talk about bad deliveries, they change their delivery personnel, and I get the paper eleven o'clock in the morning instead of five o'clock in the morning.
At least you got it.
Right, well, you know
Those people, what are you getting?
So, it could be worse, the trash situation, but also, you know, it's two thousand fifteen, so, we've said it before, I'll say it again, I just hope everybody has a healthy and prosperous two thousand fifteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry.
Get you up to date.
I'm telling fifty, I'm ready for appeal.
Sixteen, sixteen. I'm done.
Steve?
Thank you. Well, first of all, again, I'd just like to echo the town administrator's comments in relation to Jody Kater, because I've been a liaison to the Board of Appeals for a number of years, and Jody's just a bright and sunny personality, and brings an awful lot to the table, and it's certainly a loss to the Board of Appeals and Town Hall, but we wish her well, and thank her for her service, and wish her good health going forward. Additionally, I'd just also like to acknowledge the passing of another local resident this past week or so, but just before Christmas, we haven't had a meeting since then, but, and that's Mary Norris, some of you may know Mary. Mary is a longtime personal family friend of ours, the O'Leary family, she just lived right down the street on Charles Street, so, over fifty years. But in addition to that, as all of you are well aware, as we, you know, live and grow in the community here, as public servants here, we look upon our neighbors, friends, acquaintances, people that we get to learn through our kids, and ask them to step up and, and help out the community, and such was the case with us and Mary, and her willingness to do so, a terrific wife, mother, grandmother, a neighbor and friend to us all. But anyway, Mary, for a number of years, worked for the school system, Title I program with special needs children, she volunteered for the Council on Aging, Mystic Valley Elder Services, the Fourth of July Committee, this was successful days, and was always willing to offer her opinion and comments, was never shy with me, but then again, she knew me when I was a kid, you know, and was supportive and constructively critical over the years, and very helpful to me, and I certainly appreciated her, her guidance and suggestions and her, and her friendship, most of all, so to, you know, but she did trust me with her kids, I did babysit her kids, so. In addition to that, her husband Jim, who's a terrific fellow, actually gave me one of my first full-time jobs at Jordan Marsh when I met my wife, so if it wasn't for the Norris was a, there wouldn't be a Sue O'Leary in my life, so for that, I'm eternally grateful. But again, Mary, great public servant, elder advocate, advocate for kids with special needs, and knew how to shoot off the fireworks the Fourth of July. So, to Jim and Jimmy and Michael and Christopher and her grandchildren, our condolences and thanks for her service. That's all I have, Mr. Jim.
That's it. Just a reminder, the MMA Conference is in Boston, beginning on the twenty-second, Saturday the twenty-third, for those that plan on going, I think Michael could have Karen sign you up, we're running out of time, right?
We have three who
It's still open, right?
It is still open, Mr. Chairman, yourself, Mr. Yule, and I are registered to attend.
I'm hoping to be at a Patriots playoff game.
It's, I find it worthwhile, I've gone the past few years, catch one or two reasonably good seminars, or whatever you want to call them, associated with various aspects of town government, and what things are going on, and we usually get some hint of what the governor's budget's going to be, which is important, associated with our overall budget plan, around that time, whether or not it happens on that day or not, we'll find out.
It's due the end of the month, there were some nice seat cuts this week, and one of the programs that was cut, which was of a little concern, is some of the shared services programs, grant funding programs, so hopefully that doesn't have an impact on, it was your report, and maybe some of the other initiatives we have, but other than that, looks like local aid was spared, for those types of cuts so far.
So, as I mentioned before, the Financial Planning Team meeting is, is working on a three-year revenue plan, and we're hoping to get some form of level services, pro forma budgets to integrate into it, start to look, you know, have a rolling three-year plan with the ability to maybe stage some, especially new initiatives, you know, the school has new initiatives every year, and we generally find it difficult to balance the budget without making changes or removing some of those things. Hopefully, looking at it from a three-year point of view will give us a better opportunity to adjust and get some of the important things done. There's a Financial Planning Team meeting this Friday, Michael and I will be attending, I think you're attending.
Yeah.
And we'll be talking about that, we'll be talking about the school project in terms of trying to tidy up and, you know, get, get to the point of closing out on the, on the project, finding out, and down to the nitty-gritty, as to exactly where we are, so, have a discussion on that. Anything else that's, needs to be put on the agenda, you let me know.
Sure.
I want to get that out tomorrow.
I may have one item tomorrow, I'll let you know.
And Jane, I, I took notice, I should have mentioned it early, but we've been passing our minutes without any questions, and without any revisions, right? And we've been doing that kind of since you've been our secretary, and, you know, we're taking it for granted, but thank you.
Yes, thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Now, if she could just do some illustrations, you know, with the help of, you know, can you draw? A little caricatures or something? No, you're doing a great job, Jane, thank you.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move. Second.
Second. Mr. O'Leary, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Minus. Go home and watch that National Championship.